So we are back for recess at 6:07 and we do have quorum. So City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Christensen. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor.
I am here. What's happening?
Move to excuse those not present.
Sorry. My systems are ready to crash. So, okay, so there was move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by.
Second.
That's where me. Mayhew to excuse customers Christensen and Washington. Is there any discussion? You none? All is favor see I.
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 Right, unanimous we passes and customers Washington and Christensen are excused. Moving on to, we're now on our first item of business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Benson, second by Councilwoman Watten. Is there any discussion?
I'm here.
Yeah, Councilman Mayhew and then Mayor Pro Tim.
Just, are we just approving the agenda for the special meeting or for the, just a special meeting, right?
Yes. Your approach of Holloway?
Nope, that was a question.
Okay. So, all in favor see I?
I.
Any opposed name? Right, so tonight we have a closed session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1404B for the planning or adoption of a strategy or position to be taken during the course of any collective bargaining proceedings or reviewing the proposals made in the negotiations or proceedings for approximately probably forty minutes. We'd be back at 5:50. Those attending the closed session include Summit Law Attorney Sophia, maybe who actually will not be here, Finance and HR Director Jen Ferguson and Interim City Administrator Mike Chambliss, and no action is anticipated to occur following conclusion of the closed session. So we do have a Zoom link for Councilperson Johnson and we have some slides. We will be actually having this upstairs in the mountainside conference room. So let's head up there and we'll be back down here at 5:50 PM. Thank you. This council, this brings us to our regular meeting of the city council starting at 7:00 PM. But the records show that all consorts present except for our council member Washington, who was excused during the closed session or during the previous meeting. Council, please stand and join me in saying the pleasure of allegiance and Councilwoman Watten, would you please lead the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we move on to our first item of the agenda. Councilman, please have a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
And moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and by Councilwoman Watten. Council, do you have any discussion? Your project Holloway?
So I guess two things. One, like to take the swearing in ceremony off the agenda tonight. Officers on duty and unable to attend, so we'll catch them another night. May I have a second on that? Thirty.
Same way, okay. Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen to remove the swearing in this evening. Any discussion? All's in favor see I?
I.
Any opposed name? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
And then would like to add an item to Parks and Public Works regarding a request for waiver on the noise ordinance for Snoqualmie Parkway.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman Watten to add the waiver to the noise ordinance. Any discussion? See none? All those favor see I?
I.
Any opposed name? Since unanimous that passes, any additional changes? See none? So let's get back to the original agenda. All those in favor in accepting the agenda with the changes made? See I?
I.
Any saying? Okay, so it is unanimous. Alright. Thank you. So this time, we will provide time for residents to comment items that are not on the agenda. So first a few ground rules. Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. So comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and city of residence. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note that this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor, staff, or engage in debate. So with that, so again, this is items that are not on the agenda this evening, so if anyone in council chambers have public comment or online, please raise your hand. Yes.
Hello, good evening. I'm Michelle Drovedaw. I'm the Regional Manager for the Cascade Region of the King County Library System and also Snoqualmie is part of the Cascade Region and I'm here to tell good news. The library is going to be open seven days a week, starting on September 10th. So our hours will be like Monday 10 to 6, Tuesday and Wednesday 12 to 8, Thursday 10 to 6, Friday 10 to 6, Saturday 11 to 6, and Sunday 11 to 6. We're really excited about that and I'll let you in on a little secret. We really are going to be open September 9th because that's the block party and it's right up there, so, but don't tell anybody. And I just wanted to say we had, our summer reading program was a success. It ends on the 31st and we've already had 300 kids get their finishing prizes. And our storytimes are, will start up on September 21st because our children's librarian is exhausted from the parades and her programs for storytime, but I just wanted, the main thing is to tell you, we're so excited that Snoqualmie is going to be open seven days a week and thank you for your time.
Very exciting. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Other comments, for items that are not on the agenda, if so, please raise your hand. I'm looking online as well. Okay. Not seeing any. Moving on, the next item is consent agenda contains approval of the city council regular meeting minutes stated August 14th, 2023. Approval of the claims approval report stated August 28th, 2023. AB 23-094, Fourth Amendment to the Comprehensive Garbage, Recyclables, and Compostables Collection Agreement with Waste Management. AB 23-107, Resolution of Intention to Designate a Residential Targeted Area for the multifamily housing property tax exemption program and setting a public hearing date. AB 23-108, Awarding the Contract for Phase 1 of the Sandy Cove Bank Rip Park River Bank Restore and Outfall Project. Councilman, motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman Watten. Is there any public comment for any of the items that are on this consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone in council chambers and checking online. Not seeing anyone online raising their hand. Council, any discussion? Okay, see none? All those that approved, say I.
I.
Any opposed name? Since unanimous and the consent agenda is passed, is approved. Next item is community reports. So the first community report is the Finance Administration AB 23-097, Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
The purpose of Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum would be located on city-owned property commonly known as Gateway Park, which lies at the southwest corner of the intersection of Railroad Avenue Southeast and Snoqualmie Parkway. The attached exhibits, development agreement, and ground lease allow the project to move forward. Get down, move to approve the development agreement and ground lease for the public west, or Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum to be located on the public use parcel known as Gateway Park with the agreements to be substantially in the form provided herein and authorize the mayor to sign. May I have a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilwoman Benson to approve the Pacific West Rail Model Train Museum. So are there, I guess we'll go on to public comment. Are there, does anyone want to have public comment on this item? So it'll be limited to two minutes and so please raise your hand. Does it, person behind? So again, please, the same applies as earlier, so please see your name and city representing and keep it to two minutes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Caroline Villanova, City of Seattle, with the Mountain Sound Greenway Trust. Thank you, Council, for the time tonight. And I'd like to just start by appreciating the city and all their staff for the strong partners, the Greenway Trust. The city has worked to highlight the natural world, the rich history, and the rich and deep culture that has made this region within the Mountain Sound Greenway National Heritage Area so special. And through the decades of leading conservation work along I-90, in the decades it took to become a coordinating entity of the National Heritage Area, the Greenway has learned that investing in conversations and entrusted relationships is really the most important and can lead to really successful projects on the ground and projects that all partners can point to and be proud of. And so currently, there's a need for the city to continue to develop this collaborative process as it relates to a proposal on tonight's agenda. The proposal for the Model Train Museum at Gateway Park in the city was being advanced over opposition by the Snoqualmie Tribe due to cultural sensitivity to the specific area. And there was also a lack of support from the Northwest Railroad Museum, which is both an educational institution and a significant economic driver for the city because the project itself did not have community consensus. And as it's unfolding, the Greenway Trust, it's a concern that this project is moving ahead in a way that has not allowed for trusted relationships and dialogue. And perhaps there's more time needed to allow for these to run their course to help address some concerns. Otherwise, it could have detrimental impacts on these partners if it continues to move forward in this way. So we really believe that better solutions for this project can come if the city can continue to take the time to invest in intentional dialogue with partners. If so, there could really be a future with a better project, one that benefits from the expertise and perspective of professional historians and travel nations who are working actively in and around the city of Snoqualmie to preserve, celebrate, and interpret this history and heritage. So my ask today is for the city to take the time to get this right, to that's it. Thanks for my time.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Shauna Ship Martinez. I'm the Tribal Secretary of Affairs for the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. I do want to take a second to say thank you, Council, for meeting with us. I do know that I am one of our council members. I will speak for myself. I do want to make sure that we reiterate the fact that I think we had very good dialogue to explain why we're asking for six-month MOU for the signatures to hold off on that. This is a very culturally sensitive location for us. It is adjacent to our Two Sisters Return, which is a partnership with the city of Snoqualmie and we want to express a better way to use that space, how to do it in a partnership that is meaningful and also gets everyone what they want. I know that one man's dream came before you guys as far as being able to do something that he wants, but I also want an opportunity to be able to connect with that person as well, to let him know exactly what it means to the tribe in the namesake that you guys are holding as your city, which is our traditional and historic lands. Please recognize that we're not asking for anything over and beyond, but just time to be able to continue that discussion and hopefully come with a better outcome than what is being proposed today. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for letting me speak. On behalf of the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe, we are asking for an extension. We're asking for a six-month extension to continue those discussions in a meaningful way. One that will be beneficial to both the Snoqualmie Tribe and for the city and your residents. Thank you.
Anyone else in council chambers? So please raise your hand. Okay.
My name is Angela Young. I'm also a Snoqualmie Tribal Council Member. I've also been a part of this community, living right here in Snoqualmie. I live right currently in North Bend. I have young children that have grown up here and my heritage would have me in this area quite a bit. I love this valley. I love the city and I love this area. I'm blessed to live here. I do feel like the city is not really fully considering the the interest of the tribe in this situation and I feel like we need to have that extension of the six months. I would like to see that you would be open enough to consider that. I don't think a six-month delay in any of the plans are going to short circuit your ability to do that project. And I feel like that as a tribe, we are very protective of our native lands, which of course go through this valley. And we have done a lot to preserve and restore this area along the waterways as well as even over by the high school. We're assisting the green team over there to restore the habitat across from the high school there and those people are very passionate about making sure that their environment reflects their morals and standards. And I think it would be a disservice to push forward when we have so many young people who do want and do look for opportunities to represent our climate and our country well in that. And I think that there are better uses, but even if we end up with that project going forward, at least having that input and being able to make those comments and have some buy-in on both sides, I think it just puts a better relationship in front of the council here as well as the tribe itself. So, thank you.
Thank you. We do have someone online. Chico for culture. If so, you can go ahead and speak for two minutes.
Mayor, I'm not sure whose screen that is, but I I'd like to see the Zoom as opposed to the file listing if we're going to do online.
There's no one. Okay. Okay. I had two minutes.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Chica Phillips. I am a resident of Seattle. I'm also the Heritage Program Director at For Culture, which is King County's Cultural Services Agency. My role involves collaborating with museums, organizations, individuals all over this county that are dedicated to preserving and celebrating the regions' wondrously diverse cultural heritage and history. I'm always excited about potential growth within King County's cultural fabric and I have been following the public discussions about the Pacific West Model Train Museums, Development Agreement, and Ground Lease. While I wholeheartedly support cultural endeavors that promote cultural-based tourism and economic development, I'd like to emphasize a few considerations. While even in early stages of assessing feasibility, it's crucial to recognize that the strength of new cultural tourism lies in its integration with the existing cultural ecosystem of an area. Although I've read public documents and listened to recordings that highlight the anticipated benefits of the new Model Train Museum for entities like, for example, the Northwest Railway Museum and the Snoqualmie Tribe, for example, I've yet to encounter endorsements from these entities themselves at this time. I was pleased to hear that you have still been able to have additional meetings and conversations with the Snoqualmie Tribe before taking final action and I'd like to acknowledge and thank you for that. And I hope to hear that there were insights garnered from those meetings through the upcoming discussion. Ultimately, the success of projects like the Pacific West Model Train Museum hinge upon collaboration, transparency, and shared commitment to embracing the vibrant cultural heritage in King County or in a specific area. And as you all continue to deliberate on the matter, I really implore you and the project team to consider to continue working with all stakeholders, including residents, neighbors, local cultural professionals, members of the Snoqualmie Tribe, and cultural guardians in your remarkable city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding this item? And you can.
Hi, Chrissy Sparling from the Snoqualmie Indian Tribal Council. I just wanted to thank you all for being here today and thank you all for the community for coming out. The tribe and the city haven't haven't necessarily meshed all that well all the time. But I want to state that the tribe and the city, we can have resources that you can't and you have resources that we can't get. We work so much better together than we do apart. Railroads historically contributed to genocide of Native Americans. We don't oppose economic development everywhere in the valley. We have very little that we claim or that we hold on to here. It's really the falls. That's our, that's our place of creation. That's where our two sisters returned. That's our space. And we fought really hard to get it and we continuously fight for its protection. But that's like really all we're holding on to. We don't hold on to much else. We really hold on to the falls and everything around it. So I would personally like you all to consider not putting something that's going to slap the tribe in the face right there across the street from our Two Sisters Return, our creation story. Please consider that because we can work so well together and we could have such a bright future together if we just start working together and let's find something else to put there. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other person, Jim Sweet, that is online. Jim, you have two minutes for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm Jim Sweet. I am Snoqualmie Tribal Council. I'm a Snoqualmie member. I live in the valley. I see this area daily. I'm connected to this area. This area is me. I am this area. I did hear somebody comment that, that the city has met with us. I just want to go ahead and make sure that everyone understands that the city meeting with us was a meeting and it was not consultation. There is no way, shape, or form that any of that was consultation. It was, it was just to try to go ahead and meet and get some things straight so that we can move forward with meaningful consultation. I just want to make sure that that's said on public record. They have not consulted with us. There was no consultation that was there. It was just a meeting to go ahead and actually find out exactly what's kind of going on and if we can extend this so that we can have consultation. That's all it was. No consultation took place. I hope that there can be some. Thank you.
Right. Any other public comment for this item? Okay, not seeing online. Right. So Council, do you have any discussion regarding this agenda bill? Councilwoman Watten?
I will lead off and first of all, I deeply appreciate the Snoqualmie Tribe's presence tonight and our meeting, I think, is a good first step. Given the fact that we have an opportunity to bring two communities that are closely internet together even closer. I am in full support of the six-month request from the tribe to go into this phase of consultation moving forward. I think that, you know, there's been a lot of disarray over the past century and a half and this is an opportunity for us to make right, but to move forward together. And I think it's also a chance for us to celebrate this rich heritage that we've kind of inherited by moving here. And we can do that in a way that is meaningful to everybody that lives in the valley and it gives us a chance to celebrate the rich culture. So that's my position. I believe that we need to move together at the same pace and I have a feeling that what I sense is that pace is not on the same track than we need to be.
Councilman Mayhew?
So, for those that may not know, the many members of the Snoqualmie Tribe of their staff as well, met with many of the Snoqualmie City Council on Friday, just this past Friday. We scheduled a one-hour meeting. You were all invited. It was publicly noticed. Wasn't a one-hour meeting. It was over two hours. And the reason is that there was a lot of good conversation. A lot of sharing of viewpoints by the council, the Snoqualmie Tribal Council Chairman, speaking, I believe, for the whole council, but also individual tribal council members, speaking to some degree from a tribal perspective and to some degree from their own personal perspective. They're all tribal members. And so that was, I think, very informative to the Snoqualmie City Council. One of the things we discussed is having further meetings. Not only to talk about this particular proposal, but to talk more generally about some of the things behind the concerns that the tribe had. For example, you heard in public comment reference to Two Sisters Return. A desire was expressed by our city council members to learn more about that and the tribe was very willing to meet with us and do that and I think we're all interested in that. So I think my sense is that the council, the city council, would like to see more discussions happen on this, more discussions with the Snoqualmie Tribe. I think we would like to see the, I hope applicant is the right word here, meet with them. We have all heard in this chamber that he expressed an interest to meet them, so I know he is to do that. I think he was reluctant to do that without, you know, he's very mindful of government-to-government relationships and not wanting to step on that, but I think he very much wants to do that. I heard from the Snoqualmie Tribal Council, they would very much like to do that. So I'd like, I think there are some things that need to happen before this moves forward. Some meetings, some further meetings with the tribal council or tribal council representatives, some meetings between the applicant and the tribal council or their representatives. And so I'd like to see us take a little time, ask administration to lead that. We can be involved too, through our liaison to this Snoqualmie Tribal Council and give time for the applicant to meet with them. So I think, let's give this a little time for those things to play out. And so with that in mind, I move that we return this bill to committee for further consideration. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Mayhew and second by Councilwoman Watten to move this back to FNA Council Committee. Is there any, no, any discussion? First of all, I will also state that I was there on Friday as well at the meeting. It was the mayor as well. Councilperson Johnson?
Thank you. Could I just get confirmation? You can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I think that there are a few ways that this process could move forward. And one of them, I think, would be to ignore a lot of the history that we have learned through this process so far and thereby repeat some of that history. And that there's an alternative where we can spend a little bit more time working with the tribe and with the Pacific West Model Train Museum to come up with a better outcome than that. I think that this could turn into a far more beautiful project than it was before these consultations began. I would really hate for, for everyone in the valley to miss out on this opportunity for us to try to hit maybe a bit of a reset button on some of our relationships. I do apologize that I wasn't able to be there on Friday, that they had a prior commitment, but, um, but I was there in spirit. And I look forward to if we do have continued meetings that, um, that I'll be able to join. So I, I am supportive of, of this motion.
Sorry, I meant to, in my comments, mention two things. Mayor, thanks for pointing out. Not only was the mayor present, the mayor actually organized the meeting. So, uh, thank you, Mayor, and kudos for making this happen. I think in our form of government, which is a little different than the tribal form of government, it's, it's very important when we are able to speak with one voice, both the administrative branch and the legislative branch, and that is very much what was happening. Second thing is, I do want to mention, we at the city are very mindful of the economic issues that the applicant faces. So we want to see this move to a resolution, whatever that resolution is. Because we think that's, that, that the applicant deserves that. And so we'd like to see that happen. So we are mindful of multiple points of view here. And I just wanted to mention that before we vote.
Well, I just want to say, we haven't been doing this in the back room. This has been a very beyond public discussion about the Model Train Museum. Uh, there were some engagement with the tribe prior. They may not have been at the right level. These lessons learned, we'll go from there. Uh, my concern from there though is I, I would not agree to an arbitrary timeframe for a delay of this. But I think it's good to go back to committee and discuss, but I really want a discussion of what are those events or things that we will do during that timeframe and how long does it take to determine what the, what the timeframe is. Okay. I don't want an arbitrary timeframe. I want an event, activity-driven timeframe under which we have this discussion, we come to conclusion. Uh, will remind us that it is our responsibility as city council to use city property at, in the best meth, best form we can for the community at large. Talking to the stakeholders, what to do with these pieces of property we have around us. Okay. And this just happens to be one of them. So, uh, yeah, let's go back to committee. But again, uh, there's got to be some meat on that discussion. What are the things that we need to discuss, need to consider, and what timeframe do we do it?
Councilor Benson?
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with that. I think this is a very important issue for the city. I think it's also a very important issue for the tribe. And as long as all parties are moving forward with, um, seeking resolution and, uh, yeah, I, I think at the, the meeting on Friday, we all understood that that was not a consultation. We, we were, uh, we were talking about the issue in general, not having any kind of consultation there. Um, and it would be good to, to have meetings in the future where we can discuss any issues that are important to, to both sides and make sure that everybody's involved in, in, uh, in a good resolution. But definitely, I, I, if, if the, if it's not being moved forward with actual activity, then that, that would be a problem. So I hope that everybody can stay, continue to stay engaged.
Councilor Christensen?
Um, my, my apologies. Obviously, I was not able to attend the meeting last week because I was out of the country. Uh, I do look forward to meeting with you all more and, and learning more about the history to the tribe and working partnerships going forward. I think that's very important. I do also agree that it's important to make sure that we have ongoing communications about this before a decision is made. I'm certainly in agreement with pushing any decision down the road. I, I do agree with Councilor Holloway that, you know, we should set certain, certain activities that need to be done and as a way of figuring out how far down that needs to be. Also keeping in mind, um, the project as well. But I, I'd certainly be in agreement with that.
Councilor Watten?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I think we're all in agreement about the need to have a relook, a reset. I do want to emphasize what I heard from Chairman Bill Los Angeles, and it was a simple request. Give us six more months. And as this goes back to committee, as they work on, on putting a schedule together, I hope that that is taken into consideration.
Okay. So, so there's a motion to move this agenda bill, AB twenty-three dash zero nine seven, back to FNA Council Committee. So all in favor, CI? Any opposed name? Okay, so it's unanimous to move back to council committee. Council, we do have an MOU that needs to be extended then, and it can be by motion this evening. But it is just for additional three months. And that's how it was initially written. So we, you can have up to two extensions. So, um, Councilor Mayhew?
Move to authorize the mayor to extend the existing MOU for up to six additional months.
Second.
That states three months.
Up to.
In the, in the MOU. So we could do a second one at the end of three months.
Modify my motion to authorize the mayor to do that.
Okay. Second?
Withdraw. Withdraw.
Right. So, so extend the memorandum of understanding with Pacific West Rail for the three additional months. And at that point, then we can extend it as in three months, as needed, okay? So that
Three months is within up to six months, isn't it?
And it was, so that was by Mayor, or Councilor Mayhew and second by Councilor Christensen. River Tim Holloway?
So to be clear, we are voting on a three-month extension of the MOU.
That is correct.
There may be a subsequent decision for another three months.
That is correct.
Tonight, it's three-month extension.
Right. Based on the first MOU that states you can only do it three months. Councilor Mayhew?
If so, could someone modify the motion I made? Because I said the mayor could pick a time up to six months. I thought she'd just pick three or whatever. But if you want to change it, then change it.
I'd like to modify the motion for the extension to be three months.
Second it.
Okay, so the motion that is modified is for, um, extension of the MOU three months. And it was second by Councilor Benson. Right. Online, I see Joe, reason is, Councilor Johnson, any comment?
Uh, no comment.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're voting on the three months. All in favor, CI? Okay, so that motion passes. Um, we will be extending the memorandum of understanding for three additional months.
Point order, I think we now have to vote on the main motions that's been amended.
Right. That is next. And so the original one was what was the original?
I thought we voted.
Has modified its now three months, so.
Okay, all in favor, CI? Okay, is unanimous, so. Hey, any further report from Finance Administration?
No further report.
Any further report for Public Safety Committee? Community Development Committee?
No report.
Nick Siedem, Parks Public Works Committee Report, AB twenty-three dash one zero one. Purchase of community parks splash pad equipment and installation from Aquatics by Landscape Structures, Inc. Councilor Benson, would you please read the summary motion?
I would very much like to. Uh, here it comes. All right. Sorry. This agenda bill seeks approval of a purchase order with aquatics by Landscape Structures Incorporated for splash pad design features, mechanical components, and complete installation of the equipment at community park. The purchase will be made through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Contract and includes construction costs associated with the installation of the equipment and features. Move to adopt Resolution Number sixteen sixty-one, approving a purchase order with Aquatics by Landscape Structures Incorporated for splash pad equipment and installation. Second?
Moved by Councilor Benson, second by Councilor Watten on the splash pad. So is there any public comment regarding this item? If so, please raise your hand. You have two minutes. Please name and resident city, please.
Hi there. My name is Emily Anderson. I live in Snoqualmie. I'm actually a commissioner on the Parks and Events Commission. And I'm a resident just about halfway up the ridge. I am a parent of a twelve-year-old and an eighteen-month-old. And I believe I speak for both the Parks and Events Commission and most of the parents and mothers that I know in the area. I'm a member of many of the mothers groups on Facebook and just in the area of the, uh, strong enthusiasm for this splash pad. Uh, everyone I know who has kids who are about the same age as my little one is super stoked for it. And even older kids, there's been somewhat of a dearth of a place to take our kids during these hot summer days. And so, um, except for the, the firefighters who stand out there with their hoses, which is very, very welcome. This will be really great. Um, we're all really excited about the design of it and can't wait for it to come about. So we're, we're very hopeful that it will come to fruition and might potentially show up in summer, because rumor has it. So I hope you will consider it. Thanks. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this splash pad? Looking online to see if anyone's raised their hand. I'm not seeing anyone. Um, we also did receive, um, six letters of support for public comment, so. Great. So, so we do have your interim city administrator, Mike Chambliss, and who is here this evening to answer any questions. So council, do you have any discussion? Is that a?
Yeah.
So Councilor Watten?
Just for the record, I have nothing to do with this, other than the fact I'm super excited about the splash pad. And thank you to everybody who's been involved in this.
Councilor Mayhew?
Yeah, so, um, I am extremely excited about the idea of the splash pad. When this first came up, we, it was in a discussion around, um, the expanding the, uh, uh, community center and adding a pool, which I also think is a fantastic idea. And then the idea was, hey, uh, at that point, we had a design that had the pool immediately adjacent to the area, sort of the, what's, most of us residents called the amphitheater area, right in the little park there, uh, which used to have some beautiful trees around it. Unfortunately, they died. But, um, we thought it was just a real exciting idea and would make the ID even bigger. I still think that's an exciting idea. My kids are grown now. They're in their twenties, but they're three years apart and they used to be three and six. And they were four and seven, you know, can do the math. But when they were three and six, we spent a lot of time at our, uh, community, um, uh, club. And it had a fantastic splash pool, right next to the swimming pool. And, um, our kids spent a whole bunch of time, one kid in the splash pool, one kid in the pool, with one parent present, being able to keep an eye on everything. That, that's, that was just a, a great part of my kids growing up and, and us bringing them up. So I think it's a great idea. How, and, and that's why when this showed up on the CIP, I voted for it. I, I think this ought to be on our CIP. I think it's something we ought to be trying to do. However, um, I think this particular proposal has two major reasons why I simply cannot support it in its current form. So my hope is that this will change form and be something that I can support. My two major concerns are, number one, I think the location is a very bad idea. It's completely across a parking lot from where the community center and pool is proposed. So the experience that I just described that I had with my kids, that my wife had with my kids, you could not have here. You will have to choose to go to the splash pad or to the pool, but you cannot be in both places uh, and have one parent watch kids of, of those two different age groups. Also, I don't like taking out a widely-used basketball court. And, um, so, uh, I, I think the, the consequences citing it here are, um, not desirable. So I think we should find a better place. And I think we should seek the original idea, which is fold this back into the community center project and find a way to do this well-integrated with that project. So that's the location. My second of my two concerns is funding. We have never, in the city of Snoqualmie, built a one-point-five-million-dollar park using our own funds. Never. Not even half that, not even a quarter of that. We're putting in an all-inclusive playground, which was almost ten years in the making. The amount of funds that the city has put into that is just hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars. And as you all remember, or those of you on the council, just a couple of years ago, this thing was, there was fundraisers on for years. This thing was being worked on for many, many years. You all know Larry White put a huge amount of his personal effort into it. Still, the answer was no, we didn't have the funding. Then we got some state funding, but it had a massive uh, funding match requirement. We we didn't have that. We went to the county. The county threw in a couple hundred, several hundred thousand dollars, left us with a small amount to make up. Relatively small to the top, but anyway, relatively small. And we, we found a way to do that money. It was outside of our budget, but we found a way to do it. The skate park, which is right next to this proposed location, was something that took several years to bring together. The city of Snoqualmie only paid about fifteen thousand dollars into that project. It was completely funded by grants from outside the city. Well, okay, well, wh- why is that important? Here's why. One-point-five-million dollars, this proposal. We spend about three to four-hundred thousand a year on all of our parks combined in replacing equipment. Why? Because that's all we can afford. That's all we can afford. So with forty parks on a cycle, do the math in your head and figure out how often we can get and renew those parks. A park near my home, which I often go to, has a park bench. No one sits on that park bench because it's falling apart and you can't. And everyone knows that in the neighborhood. So it sits there unusable. So there's even been some discussion that maybe we need to shut down some of our parks because we can't afford them. So my point of view is if we can't afford the parks we have at three to four-hundred thousand a year, why would we spend one-point-five million? Then the last point on, um, funding is in our CIP, we have a roughly fifteen-million-dollar hole. We cannot afford the pool. We're fifteen or so million dollars short, depending on what the final project looks like. We take a million five out of that funding pool. That's another million five we've got to find somewhere else. We don't have that money. Now, some have said, oh, well, we'll just scale back the pool. Well, hold on. If we're going to scale back the community center and pool, let's make that as part of this decision. Let's not make a decision now and surprise ourselves later. Oops, we can't afford the, the whole community center pool project. Let's fold it back in. Let's do this in terms of location. Let's do it together. Let's, if we're going to do this separately, for God's sake, let's go find funding from the state, from the county. There is tons of outside funding for parks like this. I will say, just, I have a little bit of concern about the park design itself. I think that right next to that skate park, only being actively used for two to three months a year, the rest of the time, basically, there, it won't be used, so it won't be guarded by people there using it. I think all of those above-ground pertinences will, will, will take a beating, especially next to a skate park. So I, I just think, I love the idea, I just don't think this is the right idea. Put it back into the overall proposal. And, and by the way, some people say, hey, don't worry about the cost of the pool. If we can't do the pool, we'll just scale back, we can do a $15 million pool. I guarantee there is no $15 million pool that anyone on this council will vote for. No way. So I, we're going to have to find that other money, let's not put another million five in the hole. Let's not do something the city has never done, which is build a massive, remember, all the other parks, almost the other parks, certainly all those on the ridge were built by the developer, no cost to the taxpayers. So my point of view is put this back in as part of the overall project, reconsider the location and fund it as part of the overall funding for that project, or if we're going to do it separately, go find outside funding for this, not a million five of city money. We don't have that kind of money. I mean, the cost, the opportunity cost of that is massive. So I'd like to see us not say no, but send it back, put it back as part of the overall community center project and let's find a way to do it within that larger project.
Mayor Tim Holloway?
So I just, I at least want to address the location issue. The, the pool's a big project, okay? And in part of, at least the preliminary work to look at that pool, we did some reevaluating of the configuration and at this stage, conceptually, it's a one, one-level building entity. When the splash pad was next to the pool, it was a multi-level entity and you could make that connection work. Right now, you can't make that connection work, nor do I think on that level that we're building the current, talking about the current pool is, is there a location for the splash pad? So that led us to what, what can we do? So we've got that building there, which has the restrooms and a little-known storage facility tacked on the end of it that we currently use for some things, which we could reutilize as equipment room for a splash pad located near us, near that. Okay, so we'll have to go build a building for the splash pad. That forces it to be somewhere close to there, which kind of drives you to that, that tennis court there. I do share your concern about the skaters going home. Let me, let me go skate on the bear. We'll have to see how that works, but I trust that we'll, during the winter months, we'll put something around it to hopefully at least keep the less ambitious ones out, okay? So I'm not in that reconfiguring for cost. I'm not sure we left an option to get that splash pad back over by the pool without incurring additional costs for an equipment room, for some level ground, even if we did it, it wouldn't be connected, just because of the height difference now. So I think that was probably the best of, the best of worst solutions for a location where we're talking about. I do share your concern, I, I'm not sure, you know, and in the letters, everybody loves cake, but how do you pay for it? In the letters of support, it's everybody loves cake. I, I think we're going to have a real issue closing the gap on the pool. I think this is a little something we can do. In the meantime, while that works itself out and give at least some aquatic facility to the families around here. I'm reluctant, I I totally agree with you, but I'm reluctantly in support of this. I, I know the budget issue is going to be a concern and I consider this coming out of the overall $15 million, just making that hole for the pool bigger, excuse the pun.
Councilor Benson?
So if we're not going to do the pool, then maybe we can do a one and a half million dollar splash pad. But I, which isn't what you said, Councilman Holloway, but, but, you know, it feels like we have to make that decision. I was not aware, due to my inexperience, that we haven't paid for parks in the history of this city. I think the, the only example I can think of is Riverview Park that was recently, recently redone for about, well, less than a third of the cost of this park. Parks are very expensive to put in and there has been discussion about scaling back our existing parks, not, not renewing them to the same level that they are, maybe removing structures and creating more just open spaces rather than having parks. And because the expense of redoing all of the parks is enormous. I'm, I'm wondering how citizens are going to feel when their, their park eventually becomes just a grassy place with a bench. I, I'm concerned about that. I'm also very concerned about the nine months out of the year that this is a skate park extended and people are wanting to see if they can skate off a slide or a Sasquatch or a, you know, I, I, you know, so I'm, I'm concerned about the kind of beating it'll take. I'm also concerned about tennis courts, because we're talking about relocating tennis courts over to the area where the splash pad's going to be, adjacent to that, and taking one of those tennis courts away and replacing it with pickleball courts. And I can just tell you, there is a dearth of, of tennis courts in our city. I think there's an opportunity, if we did not have a splash pad there, that that basketball court could be another place where we could, we could paint some more pickleball courts. We could keep three tennis courts, which are really needed by a lot of the folks that live in the, not so many, not so much the three to six-year-olds, but, but a lot of people in this city do play tennis. And I, I'm, I haven't felt good about the, the plans to take a tennis court away. So, but the biggest concern, the biggest concern is the is just learning that, that we haven't spent this kind of money on a park. We haven't paid for a park this way in our city's history, that's, that's, that's a concern.
Councilor Christensen?
I, I think to speak to the, the merits of the design and other things like that in a few minutes, but I would like to ask our city administrator and personal works director to speak to the finances, because I think that might be helpful to understand both where the funding is coming from, as, as well as what we've done, I guess, in the past with parks.
So the, the money was appropriated as part of the CIP. And, and yes, I believe it's part of a larger fund that you're using for, you know, the non-unutility CIP projects. So it's money that could be for a pool, it's money that could be used to redo the library across the street, it's money that could be used to replace or pay valleys. So that money's, it's almost like general fund money in your CIP where you can use it for whatever projects that, that you want to do. I can't testify to the fact whether or not the city ever paid for a park or not, because I haven't been here for the whole length of time the city has. Yes, the developer paid for the initial development of the majority of the parks. And they were designed to sell houses. That's what all those parks are designed to do, they're designed to get people in there so that they, they buy a house. And usually playground equipment has about a 20-year shelf life. I'm concerned about the bench, I didn't know about the bench, we will get on the bench. Bunches have about a 10-year shelf life. And, and so, yes, there's no upfront cost, but the city is required to maintain it all along and that is on the backside. I, I, I want to apologize, because apparently I misled my committee. I never, never suggested downgrading and closing parks. But what we are embarking on and have embarked on with our consultant Gimling Horn is we are going to take a new look at the parks with the community, community involved. There will be six public meetings throughout the city, several of them at the parks themselves, the big parks, so that we get out in the neighborhood, so transportation is an issue, isn't an issue, so that there is that participation. And we want to just take a whole look, a new look at the system to see, before we spend a half million dollars replacing that playground, is that really the best use? And is that really what the community wants? At no point did I suggest closing parks, that's not me. I'm a parks guy. So I just want to apologize for that.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say, you totally did say that. So I, I apologize for not, for misremembering and I certainly don't want to misrepresent your words at, at all. And I think Riverview Park has been a smash of a success, so.
Councilor Watten?
Yeah, I, I think first of all, the reality of the cost of the, the park replacement has been a bit of an eye-opener for me, knowing that it's just replacing a typical park playground is, is almost a million dollars. Where I see the advantage here is, first of all, we're a population of 14,000 with almost 30% that are under the age of 18. We have a lot of kids here. The other thing is, I see parks as our way of making sure that it's inclusive, not, you know, because of one's ability, but one's financial ability as well. There is no gate for it, whereas a pool is going to be those that can afford it. And I, I want to separate that out, that this is a way to, to make sure that everybody has access to it. I think the other thing too is, is recognizing that parks is a big part of the city and this is a way to help generate economic development as well. From my standpoint is, it means people from outside the community will come here and they'll spend money in our businesses and that will help generate some revenue. However, it's never going to be as, as much as, as the cost and I do recognize that. But I think as far as livability, I think this scores big points in our livability and the reason why we choose to be here is, is that we are supportive of, of kids and it's a safe place to come. And it needs, we need something like this in rural King County and I think it would be a huge addition to our city. So I'm willing to stick my neck out and say, this is a good idea.
So I do want to make a statement, though, the pool is actually, because it's run by the Y, it'd be affordable to all and it'd be based on, you know, the down, the scale, the rate based on the ability to pay. So Councilor Christensen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to take a minute and just as, as another parent with young children. Sorry? Anyway, as a parent with young children, I have a three-year-old and an eight-year-old and we will, if we want to go to a splash pad, we typically have to take the kids in the car and go to Bellevue. And that's where we go and then we have to buy snacks and we have to stop and use the loo and then we have to buy more snacks and then we're driving away with my kids in the car and, and spending money elsewhere that we, we could be spending money here in the community, right? We could be meeting with other families and just, it's, it's a fantastic opportunity to give the kids somewhere outside to play in the heat that we've been having. It, it's not just going to be open two months a year, I think it was going to be open four months a year. It's much more water-efficient than having everybody at their homes using sprinklers and everything else. I think, if I remember correctly, it ends up using about as much water as a single-family home. It, just when you see the joy on their faces, I understand the price side that goes along with it, but it really provides another opportunity for little kids up to older kids to just go and have fun and do it in a safe way where they're not getting into trouble, hopefully. But I, I do think that it's, it's a fantastic opportunity that will really bring all of the members of the community together, again, at the community park. And so I think it's a great opportunity there. So I'm firmly in support of it.
Councilor Johnson?
I thought that a Councilor Mahu might have had his hand up first. No, okay. At the last Parks and Public Works meeting, I, I thought that that the city minister, interim city administrator was going to remove the, the two slides. I was wondering, did that occur or did we need to take a vote on that? Because I'd be in support of getting rid of the slides. I feel like they, they are slightly out of character, especially with vibrant colors. But more importantly, I think that they become a real issue with the skate park right there. I think they'd get torn up. So if they haven't been taken out, then I'd be supportive of removing the two slides.
They have been removed and they've been replaced, but they pull that is going to spray a double helix of water.
The old Watson and Crick.
Councilor Mahu?
So those that don't know, Councilmember Christensen just returned from a trip, yeah, fantastic trip. She was in England where they call the bathroom the loo. So that's what she was referring to, bathroom. So look, I, notwithstanding the comments fellow councilmembers have made, I don't think you do know what $1.5 million is. It's four years of the entire budget for all other parks replacement. It's an amount that's somewhere in the order of 10 times what we've ever spent on any park of city money, not the cost of the park. We go get county money, state money, we get special-purpose district money, there's all kinds of money out there for this. This is a $1.5 million we don't have. We're taking it from the pool, you don't have the money for the pool. Also, I'm shocked to hear tonight because this council has never discussed any plan for the pool. So to learn that a decision has been made, that it's on a single story is stunning to me. When was that discussion? Why is that discussion, why, why was that decision made? Why isn't it built in a way that could allow an integrated splash pool? Let me be clear, I started my comments, I'm for a splash pool. This is a terrible idea, I want a splash pool that will be used, not one that forces parents to choose between their two children and have one of the children upset, that this is not the way to do, that we can spend this money and do it well. This is doing it poorly, with a lot of negative impacts. And it's $1.5 million bucks that we don't have. If we're going to do this, let's go get funding from other sources, not blow a million five that we don't have, which comes straight out of the pool, which makes that even less likely that that's going to happen. Do we not realize how big a mountain we have to climb to make this pool happen? We're, you ever take $15 million short, now we're going to be 16 and a half million short? Or, let's see, that could take a million and a half off of that 15 million. So I just think it's just too much money, it's a great concept, let's go do it, but not this way. Not at this price tag. In the pool, we're going to have a lot of other funding if that goes forward. And then if we can't make that happen, I am 100% in favor of doing this, doing this part of the project. But let's wait until we're ready to make that decision. Let's not, let's not have wishful thinking tonight. Spend a million five we don't have and thereby impair a much bigger benefit. By the way, kids up to 18 are not going to be using the splash pool. Kids up, 10-year-olds are not going to use the splash pool. This is for a very narrow age group. Now, we have a lot of those kids, I want to do this project. But I'll tell you what, that pool is going to take care of a lot more kids for a lot more of the year than this will. So let's, let's build this and let's do this together. Let's build a pool project that has a way to integrate this. I don't know how these other decisions were made. And then I, I do want to reiterate what the mayor said, which is our existing arrangement with the Y who runs the community center and who we're talking about having run the pool and the larger community center. Income is not a barrier to using those facilities. Any citizen, any resident right now can use those facilities. If you can't afford a membership, go talk to the Y, they will work something out, you will have access. Guaranteed, you will have access. So access is not an issue. So again, I, I just encourage us, we can't afford this, put this in, let's make this happen, but let's not harm a much bigger, more important project. harm a much bigger, more important project. Let's integrate these. And if we do this separately, for God's sake, let's go get money from the people that fund things like this so that we're not putting we're not putting four years of other park spending all into one park.
Councilor Johnson.
I think that the interim city ministry might be able to speak to this a little bit better. But I believe that in our discussions of parks and public works about some of the very preliminary designs, if you could even call them designs, Google SketchUp sketches of the pool, that the reason that it's on two or excuse me, is on the one level with the rest of the Y was because the putting it on that lower level was going to just cost a massive amount of money extra that that would sort of be for what? I guess so we could move around some tennis courts, maybe the splash pad. But that it was going to be a significantly higher bill, if I'm remembering that correctly. So anyway, maybe the city ministry speaks to that if I'm remembering that right.
So, yes, the the initial programming study that we're working through has exposed that the two level YMCA would trigger an elevator. Which is a a large maintenance burden. It's also a million dollars right off the bat. They are expensive. Yeah.
One million dollars.
Yeah. And
most expensive elevator in history.
I just changed one before I came here. It was a two story elevator. And the two story design required a huge amount of excavation. And a whole lot of structural concrete to retaining wells to hold back the hill. So in our design builders opinion and statement is a one level option is the cheaper option to go for the building.
So when council unanimously approved the capital improvement plan last year, it was that included a splash pad for a million and a half. And it included a pool for fifteen million and then to work to get grants and other types of funding for the pool. It wasn't either or. It was an and. And so council, you have to vote. Are you ready to vote on this? Councilor Mayhew, is there any new information you want to share?
Yes, any information I wish to share, Mayor, you cannot cut off debate.
I'm not cutting off debate.
Well, please don't attempt to limit my comments.
You seem to have the floor quite a bit tonight only.
That's what.
Point of order. I think that this discussion is wholly inappropriate. Councilmember Mayhew, I believe you have the floor.
What was I going to say? What I was going to say is the CIP. This highlights what a tough document working with the CIP is. It's a six year vision. A massive amount of what's in the CIP is not funded. Now, what we've tried to do over the last few years is try to actually break that into categories. Here's what's funded, partially funded. We just haven't really got that right. We passed a CIP that has a give or take thirty million, it's twenty eight point five million amount for a pool and expand. Pool. That community center is woefully undersized. We knew that when it was built, there's a whole history behind that. We need to substantially increase the size of the community center to meet the needs of our community. So that's unfunded. To say that here's a plan we passed that's fifteen million dollars short and say, but I'm going to sign the fifteen million dollars shortage to one thing and not another thing. That's just not in the CIP. That's just that's just not the case. I voted for it because I thought that was a good idea. I still think it's a good idea. I just don't think this particular implementation is a good idea. I want a splash pad. I think we can do it. But it needs to be done in an integrated way, in a smart way. And, you know. Again, this this idea that we've taken this. So now we're having discussions about a pool with a million dollar elevator. I can tell you right now, we can find a better price than that. And when did this council ever discuss that that's what we were going to do? When did we ever set our priorities? When did we say? We want to blow a million and a half on a splash pad because we need a million dollar elevator. So we'll like it's just a house of cards. It doesn't make any sense. We're going to spend a million and a half because we didn't spend a million so we could put the splash pad next to the pool. It doesn't make any sense. So I'm just saying this needs to be done in an integrated way. We're making a mistake here. We're not getting the funding. It's never been done in the city before. We're just making a mistake. And I know cake is nice. I like cake. But cake comes with a cost. Okay, so I just think the cost isn't right. And this is the wrong cake. I happen to like chocolate cake. I think this is vanilla cake. So I just think it's the wrong cake. Let's get the right cake. Let's do this thing, but not this one. That's what I'm saying.
Councilor Benson.
And I just like say, I I voted for the CIP. But I wouldn't have if it had meant that I didn't get to vote on things in the CIP in the future when they came up. That wasn't my my yes vote on the CIP wasn't a however, however, it happens kind of vote. It was a, I agree with this in principle. This is these are good ideas. This is a good direction.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have on the floor is the maybe twenty three dash one oh one. So purchase the community's park splash pad. All this favors AI.
I.
I.
Those pose name.
Name.
So can we take a real call vote? Councilor Benson.
Nay.
Councilor Watten.
I.
Councilor Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
What am I today?
Councilor Mayhew.
Nay.
Councilor Christensen.
I.
Councilor Johnson.
I.
So the splash pad passes. Excellent. Moving on. Councilor Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Do you want to do the memo on the waiver of noise ordinance for Socomi Parkway?
Councilmembers, I'd like to introduce you. Each got a copy. A request and memorandum of agreement for waiver of the noise ordinance in regards to beginning of construction. The contractor has requested in consideration that school starts Tuesday that they be allowed to start construction at four AM. That is way in advance of our normal a lot of time due to noise ordinance. They would like to start that construction with the hope of getting past the school. And having it set up enough that the kids can then easily cross over without stepping on hot tar. I'm exaggerating it. Whenever we do, they would not be stepping on hot tar, no matter what we do. We wouldn't do that. But they're at least asking for consideration, maybe an early start of construction so that they can get well beyond the school prior to school opening. So may have a motion to approve a memo. Memorandum of agreement with Icon Construction for waiver of noise ordinance.
So moved.
About a second. Or he moved, I second, one or the other.
Okay, so it's motion by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Benson to waive the noise ordinance. And this is just for two days. Any discussion? Do you have public comment regarding this item? Not seen online or in the council chambers. Can you discussion? Councilor Christensen.
I just had a couple of questions. One is how will we be? Will we notifying the folks that are going to be impacted by the noise? How will they find out? And will there be any other? Will it be affecting or blocking anyone in such they won't be able to leave their homes on short notice?
So paving operations do delay. People drive it through the intersections. So at some point, yes, intersections will be blocked for a period of time. Until the asphalt cools enough that firms up enough that they can drive on it. We can put noticing out through the city social media. And to oppress at least to the local press to notify them of your decision tonight. Aside from that, that's about what we can do.
Okay. Just for clarification, will all of the folks that will be impacted by the paving still have one way to get back to the parkway? It won't affect any any homes that only have one way in, one way out.
Would you have our project engineer hand?
She's been living this every day, so she's a much better person to answer that question.
So for the bathing section next to the school, all the roads there have another access. So they'll have another way to get to the parkway other than the road. That's what we're working on.
Thank you. Pro Tim Holloway.
And keep in mind the construction we've been living through, they usually use half the road. And they get half, we get half. But when they're in the intersection, yes, there'll be a block. But it's short term. I'm guys, I'm concerned. All right. The school may have stuck up on some of us, but it's been out there for quite some time. This construction will go right through the middle of Sukome Ridge in the residential area at four AM. The noise ordinance is there for a reason. I'm concerned that we have a memo of understanding which starts four AM tomorrow. When is this?
Currently with the rain predicted tomorrow, we're looking at Wednesday.
Notwithstanding weather, it was scheduled to start tomorrow at four AM. It is council tonight. Okay, that's a little short flow. Maybe you're hearing that my voice. Okay, but again, I'm I understand this. I share this. The concern for I further share the concern that really the bus stop question here should probably be at the school instead of on the parkway as a general matter. Okay, having children cross the parkway every day, getting off a bus. Things could be better. Okay. I can't do anything for the neighborhood kids that live across the street. That's just geography and not much I can do. But bus scheduling, there is something we humans can do to make that more safe. Dropping kids and forcing them across the four lane road. No. Okay, so we need to have discussion with the school district in regards to that. Okay, that's probably just not appropriate. But I so I believe the school can take the bus in and alleviate most of this problem. I have a real hard time putting construction equipment through residential area at four AM in the morning.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, I'm just curious. So we're being told do this for kids walk on hot pavement. Surely there's another choice. So if we were to say no, is it really they have to walk on a hot pavement or what would the other choice be?
No. This was a, we had alternative plans where we would be pulling line police off to follow the bus to do traffic control at those times. So that we would take patrol officers to to be in those areas. Lot of coordination. As you're aware, with paving operations, there's a lot of links in that chain where one link can have a problem and the whole chain falls apart. So that just adds complexity to predicting any amount of time. You're going to be here at this time because you never know what part of that chain could fail. But we received a request from the contractor on the twenty fifth. And this was an option. So we're bringing it forward as an option. We have alternatives planned. I believe Captain Lynch is here. If you want to get into the details of the police response. But but there is an alternative planned. No, the children won't be walking on hot tar. They would be walking on warm rock and oil and sand. We would not let the the kids get on it. We may have to stop paving for a period of time and start paving back up after a window to get to get people across. And hopefully people can make it in that window. We were planning on an hour window. So early before school started, a little bit after drop off. But we had many meetings last week about this in in preparation for.
So just to make sure I understand your answer, you're saying the the alternative, were we to say no? The solution would be, okay, we'd have to deploy some police resources, but there is a plan B and that's what it involves.
That's correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson.
I think that basically covers my question as well. I guess I was just wondering about alternative timing, you know. Even if they did start early, if there was some sort of backup to the process, then it could end up that they would just land at that intersection between seven and eight or eight thirty or whenever that school starts anyway. So I guess I just wonder why not just plan on having the the work reach the intersection after the school would start. You know, and after that window anyway. So that I guess that could hold things up for a few hours, but I don't know, I guess what would be the downside of having them plan to get to the intersection by say ten o'clock? Or or nine o'clock or whatever is appropriate.
So the complication with pausing operations is pausing the trucking. We you don't want to wind up with a whole bunch of trucks full of asphalt cooling while you're you're paused. Because if it reaches a certain temperature, it can no longer be used. Now you just bought a bunch of material now that you're going to pay waste disposal on. And because this material is coming from Maple Valley. It's even harder to judge that traffic situation with a team for that timing. You know, if it was coming from ISQAB ninety, it's a little more predictive. But with what's going on on eighteen, it's just there are so many variables. That's why this project is even harder to predict timing on.
Councilor Watten.
I have a question, maybe a follow up to that. What time are they starting now? Seven AM.
Councilor Benson.
Yeah, I'm this is a this is an imposition. But I I mean, this is a big project. It's and it's I I honestly, with on the construction end of this, I think this whole project has gone really, really well. There have been some issues with with other aspects of it, but I feel like the construction part of this has gone really well. And there's been some weather so that that came. You know, in the last week that has messed with the schedule. And so, yes, we knew that school was coming. We totally did. You were you are right, but but we we can't control everything. I think that we got to be, we we got to control, we can control and and recognize that we can't control all of it. This seems to me like an a big imposition. But we're going to get a great road out of it afterward. And so, you know, I I feel like this is you can't, we can't hold Public Works responsible for the fact that there was rain last week. You know, we can't do that. Well, Rob can.
Probably wondering that, but all right.
Councilor Mayhew.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if I could schedule some time with Parks Public Works Director to schedule the rain for the next month because I just learned that he has that ability.
Costs a lot more than one and a half million.
I think we should cover that in Parks and Public Works.
No, no, in all seriousness, my understanding is the rains projected for the next three days. Does that change this request? It just the request stays the same and just the days move around.
The same, it just would delay. As 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 weather permits, we we cannot, we cannot put the material down with any moisture. We are we are putting oil on top of oil. And if you put water in between oil, you're going to have a problem. And and that's just not going to work.
Councilor Watten.
Okay, one more question. Are they working Saturdays and Sundays right now?
They are not.
So they could possibly extend it one more day if they need to on the weekend where it has. So they could possibly extend it one more day if they need to on the weekend where it has less impact.
That would be shift differential costs and the, the um project would go over budget. Um, because we would have to pay a premium for the staff to be available, not only the staff on the job, but also the trucking and the staff at the plant to manufacture the materials. With, and that's if we can get the plant scheduled because oftentimes on the weekends, it's scheduled for state uh projects. When they're shutting down freeways.
One more question.
Give a follow-up?
So is this money of the overrun or the overcost going to be our responsibility? Or is it part of our state allowance?
Um, it, it would be our responsibility because we're asking for the change. Um, I believe we have a little bit of a, a cons- a contingency fund as part of the project, but if we exceed that, then it would be on us to cover the difference.
Council, any other further comments?
We, we could go back to the state and ask for an adjustment, but that's a process.
Okay.
Second.
It's all in favor of um the waiving the noise ordinance for Socomi Parkway for the two, for two days during repaving. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
So there's, okay.
Roll call.
All four of you voted no, right? Okay.
All those who voted no, raise their hand.
Point of order, I think that's a parliamentary call that we have to honor, a call for a roll call.
Who called?
Aye.
You called for a roll call?
No.
I did.
Council Benson, does I? Council Watten?
Roll call?
We're doing roll call. Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm falling asleep.
Aye, and then aye, okay.
I'm the only one that's allowed to do that.
Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Nay.
Council Mayhew?
Nay.
Council Christiansen? Council Johnson? Okay, so the nays have it and the waiver to um noise ordinance is not passed. Right, thank you. So moving on, I just have a couple of comments for the mayor's report. So first of all, we had a successful Socomi Days, including the fire department um pancake, pancake breakfast last week. And just thank you to all the Socomi Days planning team and our city staff that helped make this a really fun event. So um, council, we are scheduling a meeting with our legislatures and uh you'll find on the FNA agenda coming up next week um to start the review of the twenty-twenty-four council legislative priorities. So it'd be great to have those. So when we meet with the legislatures, we can talk with them about our priorities for the next year. Right? Right. The council, do we have any council liaison reports? Council, or Mayhew, sorry.
Just uh to reiterate the mayor's point, um, if we could all think about in the past, when we've done legislative priorities, we're kind of slow to do it. Um, and we have tended to be reactive to what was put in front of us until the very end, which is sort of draws out the process. There's reason right now for us to be, and the reason's name is let's see if I talked about this tonight, Pool. The reason's name is Pool, so it's really important that we try and get on this quickly. Um, so anything that you want, if you could please find the time to do what mayor asked and try and give feedback so that we can try and get through this quickly. I think it will really serve our city well. If we can be clear about our asks and uh unified in, in what we're asking for, it'll make a difference. It really will. So, second thing, mayor, I just want to say regarding the parkway. Um, I know we had some blips in the first week with some flaggers. I know that the administration uh got on that right away and got that fixed as soon as that was brought to your attention. Granted, there was a couple of days that Facebook was aware of it, but it hadn't really come forward to you. I just want to say thank you for getting in that right away. I heard no further complaints on that. I think I echo uh, um uh Councilmember Benson's comment. I think this project overall, all things considered, has gone very well. And I, I just, um, I know you guys have had to deal with a lot and get done. And I, I just, I want to say publicly, I think you, you, it's a good job's being done. Yeah. Not perfect, but you have reacted to everything as quickly as you could. So thank you.
Yep. I'd like to thank Hind for her great job. Nice job. Okay, um, council, do we have any commission or committee liaison reports? Council Watten?
Thank you, mayor. I've got three very brief updates. First of all, August fourteenth, I attended the Meadow Brook Farm Preservation Association meeting. And one of the concerns has been that the um associations put out flyers on the, the um ferries for elk watching. And uh, it was up for renewal and, and I raised the question if that's the right methodology. And so that has been delayed, postponed, pulled from future um course going forward on that. Um, and, and I think there is some other ways that we can bring tourists to town that is a little more respectful of the animals and the wildlife. Uh, the second thing is September fourteenth, we're having a housing round table here with anybody that's interested. It's going to be from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty AM here in the council chambers. We have a, a, a whole host of um professionals in the affordable housing realm, and many of them live here in the valley. And so we're going to leverage their expertise to figure out a, a path forward. And then that'll make its way eventually back to the council on actual action that you can take. And then the third one, and I do want to highlight this too. And that is the Law, Safety and Justice Committee that I help serve on. One of my biggest concerns is the potential closure of the King County Jail, um, which has up to twelve hundred inmates at any time. Um, there is no solution yet. There was something that was just voted a couple of weeks ago um for having a new facility at Soto. Um, but that's still in its early stages. And, and as we see the, the number of um crimes going up, closing the jail is not the best solution for the safety of our community. So please um keep that in mind.
Council Mayhew?
S- sorry, uh, um. Rod, could you just repeat? It's Thursday, September fourteenth at eight-thirty?
At eight-thirty here in the council.
Right where we're sitting here.
Right.
Thank you.
Council Johnson?
Yeah, just wanted to mention that the uh planning commission is uh doing some good work on the uh comprehensive plan. They're working their way through the housing element with uh one of our consultants. And uh, they also just received a, a report from the Economic Development Committee. Uh, and they took a, a look at that. Uh, they had a few questions and sent it back to the Economic Development Committee or committee, commission, commission. And uh, anyway, so just wanted to give you guys the update that that is uh making some pretty steady progress. Uh, so we are hopefully on track for getting that done in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Any regional commissions, reports? All right. Okay. There are no further executive sessions this evening, so um, you know, for the business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Council Watten. All is in favor of CI?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, well, we are adjourned.